Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Falls Township Planning Commission meeting, February 25th, 2025. Please salute the flag.
Let's lead this to the flag, United States of America. Through the Republic of America, stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. O'Brien, please take role.
Mr. Everett.
Present.
I am here. Mr. Anderson?
Present.
Mr. Haney.
Present.
All right. Good evening, everyone. To start off, just for general announcement, Levittown Leagues did ask for a continuance as well as Earl and company, so they will be pushed to the next meeting. And we will start off with item number one, Star Tours 394 Lincoln Highway, Fairlawn, SLSPA 19030, TNP number 13-008-051, and 13-008-051-00A. Conditional use.
Good evening. I'm Ed Murphy. I'm here tonight on behalf of Star Tours. With me tonight are the owners of Star Tours, which I'm going to introduce to you in a moment, and also Justin Genati from Dynamic Engineering, who prepared the plan, which we're going to review with you tonight. We did receive Joe's review letter of February 18, and after you learn a little bit about Star Tour, Justin and I will go over Joe's letter and address any questions or comments, please, of 100 people. The full operation, corporate headquarters, back office, and maintenance, all in a single facility. So presently, they rent in New Jersey. They're going to be owner occupiers of this space going forward. So I think it's a really good opportunity for Falls to have an established business, move over and take occupancy of this property and improve it dramatically. And I think without his background, I'll introduce Pete Borowski, who he and his wife Sandy are the owners of the business for the past 25 years. Pete will give you a little bit of background about what Star is, what it does, where it does it, and then we'll come back and address Joe's review letter.
Good evening. Thank you, guys, for having us here. So I'll give you a little bit of a background. Sandy, my wife and I are the third-generation owners of Star. Her grandfather started it. We are in our 78th year of operation. Star is, besides being a family-owned business, longstanding in the area, serving customers throughout the region, Mercer County, Bucks County, Philadelphia. We're a travel and transportation company. So there are a couple of key aspects. We package and sell motor coach trips. So if you think of, if you've had any relatives who are maybe going to Cape Cod for five days, or down to Memphis or Nashville, we'll do those trips. Sandy and her team build them, find all the amazing places for the people to go. They get on our buses that are in locations throughout the region, some local, but some out in Ocean County or down in Delaware County, et cetera, and they get together and they take a fantastic bus trip. One of the things that a lot of people think when they hear about us is like, oh, is this a bus facility? Are there buses coming and going all the time? So a couple points on that. The type of work we do is over-the-road work. So we do, when the buses are out, they're out for three days, five days. There's even a cross-country trip. A bus is out for 27 days, going to California and back. So they're not at our facility very, very often. The other types of work we do, we do a lot of school youth travel. If you think of kids flying in from California into New York, they'll get on a bus and we'll guide them around and take them to New York and DC and Gettysburg and Philadelphia. These are like five-day trips. So most of our work is overnight work. You know, it's a bus leaving here and coming back there. It's not in the morning, you know, a whole bunch of buses leaving at 8:00. So we're actually a pretty quiet neighbor as far as that goes. A couple other pieces of the business that we operate under our corporate umbrella, there's a company, a tour company in Maryland called Eyre, E-Y-R-E, Tours, that we've taken over. And we do all that same planning. It's just that we use a different bus company in Maryland, and the trips leave from there. But all that work's being done in our corporate headquarters. And then we have another company that we operate called College Brake Bus, and there's 12 universities. Some of your kids maybe have written on this, if they go to Penn State or Pitt. Trips home at Thanksgiving, Christmas, spring break, Friday, we've got a bunch of buses coming from Pitt to areas all around here. So that's the very quick, you know, biography for us and history on the company. If you have any questions, you know, I can certainly answer them.
Keep Pete local until we go through Joe's review letter, and Justin and I can, I think, quickly address those. And on the screen, if you want, and we did a handout. It's probably easier to see from your handout than it is on the screen, but you can see-
Just make sure you're talking on a mic, please.
Yeah. You can see outlined in yellow the area of the property that's being acquired, and that's probably a better one to see. And you can see in the center of that property is the building, plus or minus existing 20,000 square feet. Surrounding the building, Justin can walk you around the different places where employees are going to park, buses would be temporarily parked, and things like that. And then we'll hit the Jones Engineering Review.
So the plan that we have in front of you is an overlay done on top of an aerial. What you'll see is we're still, we're maintaining the existing site as much as possible. Really, there's very little, if any improvements, being done just to reconfigure it from the existing uses, really a dealership, auto body shop, to what is going to be the bus and maintenance facility. So there's a point of access off of Lincoln Highway, which is going to be maintained. It's a semi-restricted access. You'll see that there's a right out and then a full movement in off of Lincoln Highway. That is going to be maintained, but as far as buses are concerned, we're going to be forcing most of the buses to be using the signalized intersection, just because it's easier movement for a bus to make to come off of the signalized intersection, come down North Olds Boulevard into the back entrance here, which is a full movement driveway to remain. Buses will then come into the site and be able to circulate either to what's going to be labeled on the plan here as three maintenance areas, which are right here along the back. Those are actually existing maintenance areas that are just going to be reconfigured and repurposed for buses, or to the maintenance and wash bays, which are showing up here on the top of the screen. It's an old addition on the building. You'll see with the white roof. We are proposing a limited addition off of the front, and that's just so that we can house a full bus and wash the bus within the confines of the building. So that brown area is going to be, it's still to be determined, but less than 500 square feet, and a small addition off of the front. Again, the rest of the site is really just, it's still, it was paved and it's existing. We're going to, you know, either seal coat and re-stripe it so that it's for customer parking, employee parking, and of course, some of the buses that are going to be housed there overnight. But that's really it. The site is, as far as engineering and site improvements are concerned, very limited, if any, just a repurpose of an existing facility.
One thing I would add, because I know it frequently would come up, any and all activities that are going to occur on the site in terms of maintenance, washing, et cetera, are going to be inside. Nothing's going to be outside, other than vehicle storage. That's it. Joe's letter, which we can sort of highlight, raises some of those questions, but the first page of Joe's-
Real quick, I just got a couple of questions before we go into the letter. So what are the hours operations going to be? Not, I know buses leave and go early, and with the railroad across the street, it's not the quiet area to begin with, but they're actually going to be customers parking on-site for trips, and so their vehicles will be there overnight. My concern with that is, you're on a very major highway, and if they're leaving their vehicles there overnight, and people know that, it's easy to be pilfered through. So that would be a concern for me, if they're going to be for longer trips. There are the apartments there, I get it, but just more hours of operation, what's the max amount of parked cars you would have there for clients? I know across from the firehouse, you always have the buses from, by Pizza Hut, see them all the time. I know you do that remote area as well, so I'm just curious about what the total occupancy would be if you had them coming out of there.
Yeah, I'll start with office employees, just normal operations. It's very much like a nine-to-five office, about 30 office employees. These people are doing regular work at their computers, et cetera. So that's there. Customers, pickups generally happen in the 8 to 8:30 timeframe, and they may be, while this may be a pickup spot, it's not the only one for any trip. So for a given trip, maybe 10 people, 15 people, could be a little bit more would be on there. In terms of security, we do like how well-lit the property is currently. We'll definitely have cameras up, monitoring the property, and, you know, educate our customers about that.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions? Yeah, I got a question. So will you be storing any kind of fuel? Will be, you'll be fueling up there?
We do. We have proposed, I don't know if you want to do the pointer, Justin, two 2,500-gallon fuel tanks for fueling on property above ground.
Above ground?
Yes, above ground.
Okay. Just, I'm sure you're putting all the appropriate permits with the DEP and-
Yeah, we're coming from New Jersey, so we're well aware of all the compliance and everything that we need to do. So yeah, all that, absolutely by the book.
Yeah. Hopefully, if you get in a pinch, you support the Sunoco right next door.
There you go.
There you go. So how many buses do you operate?
Right now, we have 22 Pravo H345 buses in service, two Tempses, which are 30-foot buses. So these are, you know, high-end motor coaches, very clean. We maintain them, you know, kind of meticulously, you know, very expensive pieces of equipment.
Okay. Well, because you have enough parking for 27 buses, so I guess that's for expansion in the future as well?
Yeah, it's possible. Yeah, like everyone else, we're trying to hire drivers, and so we would like to get a little bit bigger, not a lot bigger. The size of the company right now is a good size for being, you know, efficient and also manageable. So yeah, a little bit of growth, but not looking to ever be, you know, gigantic and have 50 or 75 buses by any means.
And for the friends behind the residential area, you're going to maintain that fence there and-
Yeah, I expect that we'll actually be doing, yeah, quite a bit of enhancements there, you know. Yep, that area on the bottom.
Yep.
So one thing to say, I mean, Sandy and I both were local. Yeah.
You gotta use the microphone, sorry.
I'll take it, Ed. Sure. So this, the last two sheets of your packet are Google Street View, recent photos of that area, and that's that, looking at the, if you look back at the plan right before, it's this vegetated area that you mentioned, between us and the only residential use along that quarter, which is right behind us. So if you zoom in and what that actually looks like underneath the trees, in its existing condition, they're parking two rows of cars along that whole stretch. So that's not going to be happening in an existing form, so they're going to be maintaining a row of employee parking along there, but also supplementing that with, you know, landscaping fence, something to enhance that buffer from both a visual screen and a, obviously, sound barrier.
Sorry. Quick question for you there. First off, thank you for bringing another business to Falls Township. The question I have is, you know, again, for the neighbors in the back, I assume that we're going to be limiting the idling of the buses outdoors?
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, we want that limited as well, just anywhere we are. So yes, you know, today in our current yard, if you're idling for over three minutes, you can be ticketed, different regions. So yeah, drivers are trained not to idle, certainly keep the noise down. I'm very sensitive to that. We're, you know, we're local here. We live in, in Lower Makefield. Our kids went to Pensbury Schools, so we try to be a good neighbor wherever we are. So I do see, you know, I took a drive around the front of those houses, and just looking through their views right now, our parking lot and building, I would hope that after we've got some good arbor byde and a nice wall there, that actually improves that a bit.
Thank you for that.
Yeah, definitely better than the junk cars that are there now.
Sure. And to the idling point, we are, you'll see there's a parking area for buses along the back here, along North Olds Boulevard, and then the, yeah, not along the lower portion, which is the residential. So they'll come in, park and stage in either this bus parking area, or in the other bus parking area, which is closer to Lincoln Highway, just that, the stretch right along the front here. Those are the two areas for bus parking. And it won't be necessarily idling, as Pete said. It'll just be, they can be parked there overnight, not being-
And most of the newer technology, they shut off after 15 minutes anyway. The one thing I think you may have said that I want to clarify, you're not going to make left-hand turns onto Lincoln Highway, correct?
Cannot, no.
Okay, perfect. The one thing you said about the landscape fencing, are you going to keep that same fencing there? Are you looking to do like a higher fence with some kind of privacy or something?
So we're in the middle of doing a survey to understand whose fence that is. Obviously, if it's the resident's fence, we're not going to be able to touch it, but we're looking to either supplement that with our own fence or add additional landscaping.
I mean, I think it's a great location for what you guys are looking for. I think you probably nailed it all. Any other questions before we move on to-
I don't know if Joe has any other specific questions or responses he needs to his review, but all the others are will comply type.
Yeah. Any other, before you go on to, any public comment on this project? All right. Go into the letter. Do we have a letter for this one, since it's a conditional use? I didn't see it, Diane. You just gave it to Pete. I didn't get that. Okay.
Mr. Murphy, you said the Jones Engineering Letter, they're all will complies?
Yeah. I don't think there's anything in Joe's-
There's nothing.
One we have to talk about tonight, or that-
Yeah, we're good. It's just conditional for us. It's all zoning. So with that, I'll entertain a motion for recommendation of conditional use. Second. He said I still do it still.
Well, I gotta do the whole motion, right? Yeah, so make a motion for approval of conditional use application for Star Tours, 394 Lincoln Highway, Fairlawn, SLSPA, tax parcel 13-008-051-00A, and tax parcel 13-008-0541, ZONEHC, and will comply with the Jones Engineering Letter.
February 18.
With the February 18th letter?
Right.
I didn't get a letter from Fire Marshal, but any-
Yep. That's their existing property. They'll just be inspected as is.
That's true. Okay, okay.
That should be it.
So that should be it. And in accordance with everything that was said here tonight?
Yep.
That's in the motion.
There you go. Yeah. Now, second. Mr. O'Brien, please pull the board.
All right, Mr. Everett?
Yes.
I say yes. Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Haney?
Yes. Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Yes. Thank you.
All right. We'll move on to item number two, Metals USA, 50 East Cabot Boulevard, Langhorne, PA, TNP number 13-003-008-007, Plumery and Final Facility Expansion.
Do you want me to just open all of them? Or, oh, you guys got a lot here. I mean, so like you're, you're three folders right here.
Metal, Metals USA, they made a one for this.
I was saying, you got a lot in here.
With the record plan up there.
Just go to the record, number two.
Yeah.
Preview.
Just keep saying installing update.
Try to go to the very last one, then, and see if that, the full land development set at the bottom.
Got to love those Adobe updates, ready at the worst time.
They asked me earlier if I would recommend, on a scale of 1 to 10, Adobe. I wish they would wait it till tomorrow.
Here we go. All right, well, let's try the other one, actually.
All right. Great. Good evening. Mike McGinnis from Begley Carlin, here tonight on behalf of Metals USA, Plates and Shapes Inc. The property, which is the subject of this application, is located on 58 Cabot Boulevard East. The tax parcel number is 13-3-8-7. You are familiar with the property. There's been some development of the surrounding parcels in recent years, but just to orient the board, this property essentially fronts on Route 1 and then backs on the rail line. It is located in the PIP district. It is approximately 18.7 acres. Metals USA utilizes their site for inventorying and processing a range of stainless steel, carbon steel, and aluminum materials. We went to the ZHB back in 2023, and then actually secured a zoning extension last year for impervious and building coverage. We requested at the time 70% impervious surface ratio and a building coverage ratio of 53%. Those numbers with this application have since been reduced to 64.5% and 41.5%. So just if there is any confusion about the zoning relief, it is reduced from what we secured back in 2023. Metals USA has fortunately expanded their operations and has outgrown the existing structure on-site over the last five to seven years. What we are proposing this evening is the construction of an approximately 70,000-square-foot new building, which will be used substantially for steel storage. And then, as you can see to the plan right of that building, we're looking to construct a covered storage area of a little bit over 31,000 square feet. After this is constructed, it's estimated that we're looking to add approximately eight to 10 jobs for this location. We've worked with the Jones Engineering Team. We've tweaked some of our waiver requests. What we actually have pending before you in terms of the waivers that we're asking for are very limited, which we'll discuss in a minute. I have Eric Clayce with me from Gilmore and Associates, and I have Pat Frasca with me, who's the Assistant General Manager of Metals USA. I'm going to have Eric do a little bit of a walkthrough on the site and what's pending before you, and then I'm going to invite Pat up here. He'll give a little bit of background about Metals USA, and then we'll walk through the Jones Engineering Review Letter and the waivers we're requesting. Thank you.
On the, Eric Clayce from Gilmore Associates, on the existing site, we have about a 235,000-square-foot building. If the pointer's working. There we get it over there. In this general location, as Mike said, we're proposing a 70,000-square-foot rectangular building along here. There is a 60-foot space between the existing building and the new building. There will be a 1,800-square-foot bathroom slash locker room in this general location between the two structures, and then the, what was it, 35? 31,000 canopy. We are adding 48 trailer parking spaces where I'm hovering right now. We are adding 16 car parking spaces in this general location. The stormwater runoff, all new impervious will be captured in a detention basin. Again, I'm hovering over the new detention basin. That's pretty much the gist of the changes. As Mike already covered, the zoning relief that we got with this plan has been scaled down from that original plan. There was a building in the, between the new building and the old building, we actually did have a building.
A breezeway.
A breezeway. So that was taken off the plan. We also had a potential canopy area where the trailer area, that was also removed from the plan. So this is a scaled-back version of what was originally approved. Other than that, we have the Township Professionals Review Letters. Other than the waiver items, everything is a will comply within the letters.
The other, just small plan note that I think's worth pointing out, because it's going to dovetail to one of the waiver requests, the portion of this property that is fronting on Route 1, there is a substantial vegetated buffer, which is going to remain. It's pretty well-shielded as you drive by. So that's going to be relevant as we discuss the street trees waiver, but it's not depicted on this plan that you have in front of you, but there is substantial tree lining to the front of the property. So Pat, if you wouldn't mind, you come up and just give a little bit of background about who you are and what Metals USA does and what you're looking to do here?
Hey, real quick, before we do that, just a quick question. I couldn't see on any of the plans, like, how are you going to be loading the trailers that are on there? Are they going to be loaded? I assume there's going to be trailers picking this stuff up. Are we just using? Say that again?
Yes, and everything loading-wise is done inside the building itself.
Okay, great. Thank you.
So my name's Pat Frasca. I'm the Assistant General Manager at Metals USA. At this facility, we employ about 100 people, 60 of which are in the office, 44 currently in the warehouse shop. We run three shifts, five days a week, and that's Sunday night through Friday evening. We are a steel service center, so essentially what that means is we get products in from the mill. We don't manufacture anything. We get the steel in from the mill, do a value-added service to that product, and then ship it off to end users, such as commercial, residential, and government shipbuilding is one of our prime customers. That's the easiest way to describe us, is we're like a Walmart for steel. You can get anything you need structural-wise, steel beams, rebar, angles. That's pretty much it. Unless you guys have some questions for me.
Will you cut the size? Like, do you have, do you bring rolls in? Do you have a shear? Do you cut down the size and-
So we do not have any shears. We do cut the size with hemsoils for structural products, beams, angles, tubes. And then we have plasma machines, two plasma machines that cut steel plates into shapes per customer specs.
Okay. Just, I like this flow better. I used to work at a building next door, and they used to park overnight on the side of the building. It looks like this will kind of take that out, which is huge, because they used to be on the road and everything coming from GM Warehouse. I think this is a very good design to get things flowing, especially with the backlot and more, and just more streamlined, so.
Thank you.
It looks good. Okay. All the steel's going to be stored inside?
Everything is inside with the, well, the lean-to, which is that 31,000 or 33,000-square-foot, is going to be an open wall space. That's going to be for steel storage, for plates. Everything else is inside.
So it's just, it's covered, right? It's just not, it's not, technically, it's not inside, it's just covered?
Just covering, yes.
Okay. That's just to keep the elements, the weather elements off of it?
Yes.
Just two, two things. I'm impressed with the fire truck and the drilling. It's the first time I've seen that and doing this for 10 years. So I always asked for it, and it's the first time I saw it. So that was pretty cool. Second, with the fire department, once you get this done, please offer them a tour, the local fire department.
Absolutely.
Come in, see it, and the new setup and everything else that, especially, we've been there once or twice before, unfortunately, but when we get in there to understand what's there and what our support is.
Yeah, absolutely.
Any questions?
I'll just note that two of the waivers that we had initially identified, we've worked through and don't need any longer. I'll just note that two of the waivers that we had initially identified, we've worked through and don't need any longer, which means that the only waivers that we're seeking this evening relate to the existing features waiver, which you're very familiar, one ninety-one seventy-eight C two. And then we have waiver requests from one ninety-one thirty-one A, which is a waiver asking to not install sidewalks, given the location of this property. And then one ninety-one forty-eight A, which relates to the installation of street trees for the reasons that we discussed previously. Everything else in the Jones Engineering Review Letter is a will comply. And then if it's requested for preliminary, final, or required, I, sometimes it is required, sometimes it's not. So if it is required, as a formal waiver request, we are requesting a waiver from one ninety-one eight B for preliminary, final, and tandem.
Okay.
You said one ninety-one thirty-eight?
One ninety-one forty-eight A is the street trees waiver. One ninety-one thirty-one A is the waiver from sidewalks. One ninety-one seventy-eight C two is the existing features waiver. And then technically, one ninety-one eight B is the preliminary, final, in tandem. That said, everything else is a will comply.
A question on fire marshal letter. I'll assume it's all will comply.
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Jones, any concerns?
No concerns. I would add that I think we should make a command decision now to not require the waiver for the preliminary final, since ninety percent.
Sometimes it's requested, sometimes it isn't, so for record-keeping purposes, we are requesting that. Thank you.
Entertained motion.
Yeah, I'd make a motion for preliminary and final land development for fifty-eight Cabinet Boulevard East. TMP thirteen dash zero zero three dash zero zero eight dash zero zero seven, zone PIP. Including waivers, one ninety-one thirty-one A, one ninety-one forty-eight A, and one ninety-one seventy-eight C two. Also will comply with fire marshal, remitting burning engineers, and the Bucks County Planning Commission, and Jones, is there, was there? Was there a traffic study on this?
I didn't see one.
Okay. So all will comply, fire marshals?
Correct.
Entertain second.
I'll second.
Mr. Brian, pull the board, please.
Mr. Everett?
Yes.
I say yes. Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Haney?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, we'll move on to item number four. Keystone Trade Center, six hundred, Ben Fairless Drive, Fairless Hills, PA. TMP number thirteen dash zero five one dash zero zero one dash zero three four. This is for amended final plan.
We're gonna try.
Yeah.
All right, never mind. We're not gonna try.
Just get back to the.
Yeah. So. Building six, phase.
Building six. And then direct over to that top one, yes.
Adobe today. I think it's, I mean.
It's good enough.
I don't know if it's gonna close or not, but we'll find out. All right, good evening. Mike McGinnis from Begley Carlin here on behalf of North Point. I have Eric Clase and Jeremy Michael with me. Wait, now, the Adobe is doing something. All right, I'm gonna talk and assume that it's gonna respond in a second. The first North Point agenda item relates.
Sounds like it's time for another update.
This isn't even the same problem that happened last time. Let's try this again. All right. Hopefully it doesn't go back.
I won't touch anything. I'll just leave it at that. All right, this North Point application is an amended final plan for Building Six. We went back to the zoning hearing board in November, this team, and received zoning relief with respect to an accessory structure setback in the width, the point of entrance for ingress and egress. It was discussed at the zoning hearing board. We'll say tonight that this is necessitated because of a modification in the projected end user to facilitate a data center use. So as you are aware, because we've been in front of you many times, the majority of the North Point campus is developed as spec warehousing. This portion of the development was also approved as spec warehousing, and that facilitated the construction of an approximately one million thirty-five thousand square foot building. The layout of this, of the building itself has not changed to the exterior. The layout of the, some of the non-structural improvements, things like the stormwater facilities, the parking areas, the basin regrading, those changes have existed, but they're not substantial in nature, in a way there, can detail in a second. But because of the, the change in the end user and because of the exterior site modifications, not the structural modifications, in discussions with the township, it was mutually agreed upon that it would be prudent to process this as an amended final rather than a field change, which requires us to come back before the planning commission and then the supervisors. We did pick up, I believe, one additional waiver, which I'll just say at the beginning instead of at the end, because the review letter otherwise is very short, and that's from one ninety-one thirty-seven E, because of the security gate to allow a three-foot radius between lanes. There are no other comments in the letter of substance, but I do think, just real high level, very briefly, have Eric explain what you're looking at as a refresher, and then Jeremy's here. We're gonna discuss between this building and the next building. He's happy to answer any questions with respect to what's necessitated the change, but again, it's because of an identification of the end user changing the use.
Okay, this site is known as Phase Two in the North Point Development. The building that is, the grayish area is the one in question tonight. The walls are staying in place. They're retrofitting the inside of the building to no longer be a warehouse. The outside, rather than have loading docks, has some storage areas that are caged in around the building. Other than that, there's no other changes to the building. There are some tweaks to stormwater basins for a little bit of, some changes with the grading around the building, because they are no longer loading docks, but other than that, it was some de minimis changes to the plan. We, we kept all the revisions right around this building, and again, you're just going from loading dock areas to what we have today.
Jeremy Michael with North Point Development. Mike and Eric did a pretty good job, I think, of summarizing the modifications, but happy to answer any questions you guys have on the project.
I'm good from our perspective. It's basically the same. You're just asking for one, looks like one amendment from before. It's still gonna be the same.
Correct.
Any other important questions or comments? Any other questions? All right. Any public comment on this one? Okay. All right. Entertained a motion.
I'll make a motion for preliminary final land development for North Point.
It's amended final plan.
All right, an amended, I'm sorry, an amended final plan. For North Point, Phase, North Point Phase Two, one Ben Fairless Drive, tax and parcel thirteen zero five one zero zero one. You're asked for the additional waiver, one ninety-one thirty-seven A?
Right.
Yeah. All right.
Yeah, I mean, it's the same as before.
And, yeah, and every, all the other plans will stay as.
Was approved before.
Yep.
Second? Any question, second?
Yeah, second.
Mr. Ryan, pull the board.
Mr. Everett?
Yes.
I abstain. Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Haney?
I abstain. Thank you. Go on to the next one. Next one will be Keystone Trade Center, Charles Boulevard, seven hundred, seven hundred South Port Road, Fairless Drive, PA. TMP number thirteen dash zero five one dash zero zero one. Preliminary and final land development, area three, phase three.
All right, well, it's up for now, but.
All right, good evening. Mike McGinnis, Begley Carlin here on behalf of North Point. Again, rather than an amended final, technically, this is a full resubmission for preliminary final. So it does cover the area that was previously Phase Three, that was before you for consideration, and then was subsequently approved by the Board of Supervisors. But because unlike Building Six, this is a dramatically different plan, we resubmitted in full. So if you will recall, Phase Three originally depicted four different warehousing, distribution, spec facilities, like the rest of the North Point campus that you're very familiar with. This area is a little less than two hundred and fifty acres, and as you can see on the plan, that has now been revised. The four larger buildings have been deleted. They are replaced with ten, what am I gonna say, ten principal structures. There's some other smaller structures here, which range between one hundred twelve thousand two hundred fifty-four square feet to two hundred seventeen thousand four hundred and fifty-four square feet. The design of this is to facilitate the construction of a, what we're labeling a digital infrastructure campus. So again, as was noted, it was originally designed to be spec. It was approved. There has been some work that's been done, primarily environmental work, but North Point ended up entering into an agreement with a new user, which depicts a, both a change in this instance in the use, to this digital data use, first and second of the design in a substantial manner. These new structures would all be one or two stories. There is a significant reduction in traffic that would be generated from this use going from the distribution to data onsite. All of the zoning comments are a will comply. We do have a few waivers. I think because of the nature of this design, it would be appropriate for Eric to, to give you a walkthrough of what you're looking at here. Probably wanna hear a little bit more information from Jeremy, and then we're happy to answer any questions before we get into the waiver requests. I will say, as a preview to the waivers, I believe all four of the five waivers that we've identified were the same waivers that existed with the prior use. The other one relates to Cartway with, which we'll get to in a second.
Okay. This was known as Phase Three on the original submission. As a land development itself, we are disturbing the entire area. On the first design, you did have four warehouse buildings with perimeter basins for stormwater management. You still have the basins in the same places with some tweaks to them, but now, instead of you have four large buildings, you have ten smaller buildings, and as Mike said, there's some accessory structures along with that. Obviously, circulation through the site is a little bit different, because you don't have four buildings anymore. You have the ten. But other than that, it's the same limited disturbance. It's just a different end user, and rather than four large buildings, you have ten smaller buildings. But like I said, stormwater management is very similar. We do have the waivers that were asked for the first time around that we will be asking for again. Mike can go through those, or I can go through them. Other than that, do you have any questions about layout or stormwater management? Okay.
The one thing I do have, what is the egress path and vehicle traffic that's gonna go between these ten buildings? Is it gonna be golf carts? Is it gonna be motor vehicles? What is the?
It's, it's motor vehicles, correct. Yeah, it's motor vehicles.
Okay. Do we have enough parking? Cause it's.
Yeah, we provided per ordinance.
Okay.
Again, this end user is a lot less than what a warehouse user would be.
Oh, understood, yeah. I'm actually glad that it's something else in the warehouse going down there, to be honest with you.
We thought.
Microphone, sir, you know that better.
I think, and maybe you don't need to editorialize this, but I will to second that, that comment. When we had originally had conversations at the very beginning of the North Point project at the KTC, I remember estimating with the township that we were probably gonna end up with a split of maybe seventy-five, twenty-five, seventy-five on the warehousing, distribution, twenty-five on the manufacturing. Obviously, most of what has been developed has been on the warehousing distribution, very little on the manufacturing end of things. I think this use ends up, once it's built, being a nice complement of that mix and match. Obviously, it's not manufacturing, but it, it delivers on that vision of not just one uniformed use spread through the whole campus.
Do you guys know, like, what, what would be the employee size there? I guess, I guess for both.
Yeah, one, one interesting kinda note on this is a lot of the, the end users kinda operations in terms of size, capacity, investment, that type of stuff is highly confidential. So there's a limited amount we can share, but I would just give you a range like between five and eight hundred, so substantially less than what we would have on the industrial side of things.
It'll be more of a professional presence, I would assume.
Yeah, and that's a.
Too, which is good.
A, a big thing to point out, you know, in terms of like the job creation, it is a much different employee pool in terms of like, these are skilled, technical type staffing.
Anything in the area for like more power coming in or something like that?
Yeah, so that, that's one of the unique kinda draws to this site in particular. There's a generation facility, you know, just adjacent to this property on the top of the page. So Sarwood or Fairless Energy operates a, a gas generation facility there. There is existing transmission infrastructure. So part of the legacy infrastructure for the old steel, steel mill is now kinda put back into action there. These campuses require a, a pretty significant amount of water usage. So between, you know, the, the service water and the industrial waste systems already being present on site, we're able to reuse a lot of that infrastructure.
Any of that being upgraded, the power, any like substations being upgraded?
Yeah, so there's a fair amount of existing infrastructure that stays in place, but certainly a lot of new development as well. So there'll, there'll be some changes to the PICO side of things on the, the utility infrastructure, and then there's some customer-owned substation equipment as well.
Yeah. Any questions here? Any public comment? All right, we'll go to the waivers.
Make a motion for.
Whoa, 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 we didn't do waivers yet. I'd like to jump on the gun, we didn't do them yet.
So I'm gonna be unhelpful and work in reverse. We have 19178C2, which is the partial waiver for existing features, and then 19152B4B2, 191521B3B2, and 191521B3B1. Those relate in order to the way I read them, to Woodlands disturbance, and then the B2 and B1 relate to slope disturbance, and as I indicated, and as Eric summarized at the beginning, those were basically fully developing this site, and those were waivers for disturbances that were previously provided and granted for the Phase Three development, as was depicted. The only other waiver that we're asking for is 19131A to permit a 32-foot width rather than the 36-foot cartway width as required by ordinance. Everything else in the review letters is a will comply, and I will note, in light of the presentation two matters ago, we don't have a preliminary final waiver request for this, but if that is necessary, we would request that as well.
Very good. I just wanna confirm, Mike. Was 19178C2, 19152B4 and B2, and 19152B3 and B2, and 19131A?
31A, and then I have 19152B3B1 is the other slopes disturbance as well. The B1 is 15 to 25%. B2 is over 25% slopes.
Entertained a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion, preliminary here, final land development application for North Point Area Three development, TP 13-051-001, zoned MPM. Waivers, 19131A, 191521B3B1, 191521B3B2, 19152 dot one B4B2, 19178C2.
Correct.
Of course, will comply with anything, fire marshals and.
Bucks County Planning?
Bucks County Planning.
Birmick.
Birmick converting. And that's it.
Should be it.
That's agreed, yes.
All right, second. Mr. Brian, please pull the board?
Mr. Everett?
Yes.
I abstain. Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Haney?
Abstain. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Have a great night.
All right, before we get to minutes, I wanna give my friends a couple seconds if they'd like to speak shortly. I know we don't have public comment, but I know you came out here and you sat through this, so give you the opportunity if you'd like to say something. Appreciate, okay. Thank you. All right. You're welcome. Item number seven, minutes from January 28th, 2025.
I make a motion to approve?
Second.
It's printed, yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We can do it all. It's printed, okay, we're good.
Second, aye.
And make a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.